Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our council meeting. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're all, thank you, Aaron.
Councilmember pointer?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember district?
We're.
Councilmember Sherangold?
He'll join us when he gets here. Okay, first thing here is I need, there's no changes to the agenda, correct? Does anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion in a second to approve the agenda. I move to approve. In your second?
Awesome.
Linda?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
And it was done. Okay. Next year of our public input period, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record before proceeding with any comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa's meeting law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Does anybody want to speak to the council tonight?
Jay Schmidt, seven fifty Ridgewood Drive, Manchester. I'm gonna read to you what's in the paper. And this is one of our council persons who made this comment. And it's about the, well, let's go ahead and read it. Yeah, it's a few people in their houses get blown away by a tornado, and we can't get to them with a fire truck. I guess that's not important, but to me it is. As retired firemen, I think it's very important. To some people, it's not, but to me it is. If you look three hundred feet to the west, there's another road through the fairgrounds that does exactly what Grand Avenue does, exactly. Now, all the stuff that we're getting for the kids to walk on, in order for the kids to walk on it, they gotta go down three hundred feet to the east and take the new sidewalk, then three hundred feet to the west. Now, you know they're gonna cut through the fairgrounds because that road's open all the time. Right now, there's some gates at the end of it. But they, they're not even locked. I go up and look at it. So then I go look at the school buses. There's no buses go up there. And there's nobody walking up there. So we spent a million dollars on that road. And why don't you just be honest with the people why it was built? It was built for future development for a contractor. That's what it was built for. There's no houses up there. We got streets in this town that need work. Old Highway twenty's been terrible for how many years? I know it's gonna get fixed, but it should've got fixed years ago. So what I'm doing is proposing that we get something called an inefficiency committee. Have certain people on the board with neutral, not a contractor, not somebody who's got skin in the game, but a neutral person. And have a committee, they go look at the project and then give the council all the points on it. That way, there's not, they're not biased. They're not taking sides. There's no money involved, just neutral people. And I talked to some council members about it, but it's up to you folks to do it. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything, Dr.? Come to the council for it today. I'll give opportunity here since somebody just walked in. Did you want to speak to the council tonight at all, Diane?
I did.
Okay, that's all right. We're just at that point, so I just wanted to make sure. We're just at that point, so I wanted to make sure before I closed it, yeah, before I closed it.
So you're ready to read?
If you want to do that, yeah.
She's on the agenda.
Oh, are you on the agenda?
Yes.
She can talk now about the agenda item.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, absolutely.
Diane Hamel, one oh eight Bailey Drive, M. So I'm here for, I'm tied on my disc.
Six point six.
Thank you, six point six. This is a decorative street lighting project that we want to do. I'm with Manchester Vitality Endowment. And as you know, we've done some different community projects, and this has been in the works for multiple months, get all the pieces into place. So what we want to do is decorative street lighting. It'll be about twenty to twenty-two feet above street level, and it's gonna be on the South Franklin half block. So from the alley of F and M Bank to the corner of Franklin Street Brewery Riverbend. It'll have six strands of lights going diagonal. We've worked and got the approval from the business owners. So that's what's in front of you tonight is the easements. They've been all about it. They've been excited. I will say that I've talked to the chamber president. This is something that's on their shortlist of they'd like to see projects done. I know that El Cator's done it.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Some lighting, Marion Street. So it's just another vitality project. We're funding the lights, labor, all of that. It's gonna run us around eleven thousand that we have the funds to do that. So we're just asking, I'm here tonight. Hopefully, you will approve those easements so we can pull the trigger. We'd like to get them lit, get this maybe by the window walk, because it's kind of our hope. So again, we felt that that was the first place to start. We like to do more. That's where the city and the chamber holds events. So time gives you that excitement. People drive into town seeing things. You know, I know we've got some storefronts that are empty, but again, we can't ignore those areas. We need to, you know, show that we're vibrant. So anyway, I'm just asking for you to get consideration. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So be in front of the storefront.
Right, so we have the four property owners that, good question, thank you, Brian, is Miracle Ear. So that's Mike Corkery's building. Widener, Bob Sack, he's like light it up like New, um, Las Vegas, and West Schulte, and then Franklin Street. So there's four points that'll connect on the west side, three points on the east side. So this was the start that these were the amount of funds that we could do half a block. We did purchase another set that we could now do another half block hopefully next spring. So I think we'll get engaged with our downtown community, and they'll see that as a great thing.
At least white lights are covered in.
White lights, LED.
Okay.
Yes. And we, you know, and I wanted to say thank you for the partnership that you provided Manchester Vitality. You know, we're just a group of community members. We've raised funds in the endowment, but you helped us with the flower baskets. We have a mural that we put up. We've got another mural coming next summer, and other things that are on the table, so we appreciate, and it takes the partnership.
Absolutely.
So.
Do you know when you're planning to get these up by?
Well, we want to pull the trigger tomorrow. So I talked to Jason Hay, and he is, we're hoping to get, start. Mark Becker's been fantastic, and they know he'd like to have it up by the window walk.
Okay.
Whether or not that happens, they'll get lit when they get left in. Okay?
You said you're gonna have eleven thousand dollars invested in this on your guys' end if there're gonna be any, anything coming from the city side?
So there is a whole bunch of cash, not like for the city. We'll have some internal labor.
Yeah, so, and we appreciate that. So, and Mark's been great to do the same. So hopefully, that's the worst case number, but we have the budget to cover those expenses.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Diane. Didn't mean to put you on the spot when you walked in. All right. Anybody else need to approach the council tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. First item, a motion to approve the minutes of the November twelfth regular council meeting. Need a motion to adopt resolution one nineteen approving the bills and expense reports. I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the city reports from the library board, wastewater, wastewater reports, parking wreck, board of adjustments, and P and Z. Next, I need a motion to approve the liquor license for Oni's wooden nickel. Another motion then to proceed with the third consideration and final adoption of ordinance sixteen, and that's regarding our noise control, chapter forty-eight. I need a motion to adopt or to proceed with the third consideration, final adoption of resolution, or ordinance seventeen. That's amending the code for the parking regulations and parking for certain purposes that are illegal. I need a motion to adopt resolution one twenty, and that's a salary amending. We have a circulation clerk or librarian who has reached six years in her current position and recommended for an increase. I need a motion to adopt resolution one twenty-one approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-four street financial report. Do you want to speak to that real quick or wait till there is?
A report required by the DOT. It just recaps what we've seen on our streets for the prior fiscal year.
Thank you. I also need a motion to adopt resolution one twenty-two, and that's approving the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Again, this is required by the state.
Yeah.
I need another motion to adopt resolution one twenty-three approving the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year of twenty twenty-four. Also.
This was a report that was adopted a few years ago. It's required. I don't know who looks at it, but it's required to recap what we spent from our tip funds for the past fiscal year. So it's just a recap of what was spent.
Next name, motion to adopt resolution one twenty-four, and that is obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment finance obligations, which will come due in the next succeeding fiscal year. You want to speak to that too? Or is it more, you're good at it, she can do this.
Needs, the development agreements that we enter into, they have what's called the annual appropriation, which means each year the council approves the payment of those development agreements. You know, it's basically broken out in each agreement, but it's required to appropriate it each year. So that's what this is, all the ones that have come up that have come onto the tax rolls that are now eligible for their payments through the development agreement that the council have previously approved.
And the rebates, that means they're paying their property taxes, and they get a portion of that back, paid back to them.
This is money that we've received, and we're rebating a portion back.
Next, I have a motion to adopt resolution one twenty-five approving the subdivision plat for the Drees Second Subdivision. I think you have a copy of the preliminary plats and everything there. I need a motion to adopt resolution one twenty-six, and that's approving the subdivision plat for Oakview Estate subdivision. I believe they're splitting some lots and changing up some things there.
Yeah, this is the replat of the four lots that are in the interior circle. Addition of those four lots, we're going to have attached single family homes that will then split down the common wall once that was established, what, saying of the homes. But now we're going to change it to six lots with a smaller style house.
And final is resolution, I mean, motion to adopt resolution one twenty-seven, that's approving the final plat for West Whip Edition Phase three. This is for West Schulte over in West Marion Street.
That's correct. Now, what he's doing is fighting off where the individual twelveplex units are at. So they'll have an individual parcel ID. A lot of this deals with financing, how your things are tied on mortgage per parcel. So this finalizes what he's looking at there as far as fighting that off, and then he'll have some outlaw in order for that to be for future development.
I'll take a motion in a second, and then I'll open it up for discussion.
Want to make a motion to approve?
I'm sorry. Any questions or comments? Or discussion?
As far as Oakview, we're going from four to six, and then we're just gonna single family loans.
Correct.
Further questions? Joe?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
All right. No public hearings tonight, so we'll go on to our regular agenda items. And first, we get to hear from Maggie Summers, the tourism director.
Hi, thank you for letting me come present to you guys tonight. So this is the year-end report, kind of an overview. There's a lot of details in it, but I will hit all the major highlights for you. So a huge project that we did this past year was the rebuilding of the tourism website. That was done by an Iowa Tourism Grant. It launched in June, and it's received over seventy-five hundred visits in six months, which is pretty great, about fifteen hundred a month, and expect that to continue to grow. New website functions include a favorites feature, which I've put on the packet there. So anyone who looks at the website can choose kind of like heart is what it is. Any item, places to eat, visit, and then it'll accumulate it in a list that you can email out to people, you can print it, you can so it makes traveling easier for people who are on the go and on their mobile device all the time. So statistics on how I manage the website and how I saw the traffic, I use Google Analytics for that for the website data. So there's lots of graphs and different things. If anyone has any questions on more detail of that. Looking at social media, main platforms are Facebook and Instagram, a little bit of YouTube. Everything seems to be trending up from the previous year. There's some graphs there which correlate to just the Facebook, just the views, the reach, and then how many visits are there. The views refer to how many times content is displayed or put in front of people. So those numbers keep growing, which is great. Looking at YouTube, we got to do some cool projects within the last, well, it was in October of two thousand and twenty-three, but I haven't done a year-end report for that yet. But adding this on to it, we did a partnership with Northeast Iowa RC and D, which was linked to my involvement with Delaware County, or Delaware Crossing Scenic Byway Board that I'm on. So we got to do some video footage with drones. These guys are super talented. We highlighted Lake Delhi, Hot Rot's and Harley's in Poptit and Sherman's Pumpkin Farm and the Manchester Fish Tattery. That video has received over a hundred and fifty views to date, which is great. The other one was at the Manchester Whitewater Park, and that is linked on the tourism website as well as the Manchester City's website to promote the Whitewater Park, and that one's reached over three hundred and fifty views. So video content is the way to go. We're seeing partnerships that we've been involved in the past year or so. Travel Dubuque was a big one. It involved Delaware County, Jackson, and Jones Counties to kind of expand on Delaware County's reach by travel Dubuque's larger reach. Things we got were landing pages on their website, a feature in their travel guide, which is distributed on a much larger scale. Their welcome center sees twelve thousand visitors annually, so I've got to put some Delaware County items there, which is great for more visibility. And then what was supposed to happen before right now were the selfie stands, and they're still not up yet, and it's getting really cold, so I think that's gonna be a spring project. But still, still on the, on the table. We're hoping to continue that partnership with Travel Dubuque to continue to see the growth in access to more, more distribution of our products. The next page is the, the page that was highlighted in their travel guide. On page six, stop me if you have any questions. The Foundation for the Future of Delaware County awarded Delaware County Tourism a twenty-five hundred dollar grant to purchase data software called Arrivalist. These graphs below on page six are highlighting where visitors are coming from, when they're coming, are they traveling for the day, are they coming overnight? And then this is, this has been a new feature for us, and it's been nice to share. I know I've shared it with the city clerks throughout the county. I presented it at the Edgewood Annual Chamber Meeting. I've shared it with Judy Dolmire with the fair. But it's accessible if anybody would like to.
Can you explain how it, how it gets the information?
Yeah, so it's pinged off of your cell phone. You have to travel from fifty miles away, and you have to stay for two hours. So that's their definition of somebody who's a true visitor or tourist, I guess. Not a hundred percent accurate, because if there's, you know, a whole family, kids aren't having cell phones, so but it gives you a good ballpark. And looking at where people are coming from is what I was interested in most, because when we're doing things, you know, paying for advertisements, knowing where money's going, and knowing that we're getting the best ROI on those dollars is key. That top graph on, the graph on the left shows everywhere, and it includes Iowa. The bottom left one excludes Iowa, so that's looking at just out-of-state travelers and where they're coming from, and that's changed. It used to be Madison was a big one, and that's moving down a little bit. So that's nice to see. So that will be, so that was purchased for this year with the foundation grant. For next year, we will budget for that again, and that is due to there are five communities within Delaware County that have contributed extra dollars towards tourism, and it's going to pay for the software again for next year. So we'll continue to have access to that. Iowa Tourism Office, we did a marketing refresh project, which was funded with a sixty-one hundred dollar grant. The website that I mentioned earlier was part of that, and then the little pocket guides is what we called them that we all received. So a little bit different than the activity guides, which I brought to them, but I think everybody's seen this by now. I don't have very many left, so I hope you've all seen them by now. It's more of a directory, not so much telling about experiences and stories that you're gonna find here, but there was a little bit of a partnership from a few businesses throughout the county that paid some extra dollars to do some ads, which enabled us to print seven hundred and fifty copies, and many of them will be distributed at the Nuacopia event that we intend in March of next year. So rolling into some prints and email marketing, our main things we focused on this past year, these activity guides through our new website, we allow people to request them to be mailed to them, which is something new. It's a fairly low cost. It's a dollar fifty-one per guide to mail to people, but on page seven, you can see that list there. That's all the places that we've mailed them to, which I've collected where they're from and then how they found out about Delaware County, and then fourteen of them also agreed to be on the email list, so they'll receive marketing information going forward from Delaware County.
Do you have this available on a PDF that people can just print it from their?
I don't, but I can.
I just instant mail it, it's just.
No, okay, so these ones.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, it's those.
This one. I mailed this one.
That was your mail.
Which, these are done with a partnership with the Manchester Press. We've done these for a long time, but I changed the size of them because people like small things that you can just throw in your bag or in your pocket or whatever. So that's we, I was given almost two thousand copies, and I think I probably have like maybe fifty left, may, maybe even less than that. So they've been distributed widely, Field of Dreams, we've got access to Travel Dubuque, and then around town to areas that are heavy traffic. Yeah, so I think that's it for though. Only did a couple prints ads this past year, definitely focusing more on our digital presence, because that seems to be the most relevant. But Vacation Land hits the kind of surrounding areas of Eastern Iowa, Illinois, Wisconsin. Promoted the Whitewater Park through that. The QR code listed there on page eight goes to that YouTube video that promotes the Whitewater Park. And the other one was just promoting parks and outdoor recreation that we have in the area. I mentioned earlier, we do some email marketing through MailChimp. There's a hundred and twenty-four people that subscribe to Delaware County Tourism emails, which is great. Try to do like one to two a month is the goal. Continue to do that. Going on to page nine, special projects and events. I've just highlighted there things that we go to kind of annually. I did some partnerships and kind of helped with marketing initiatives for the Edgewood Chamber a little bit. We participated in setting up a, they, we were invited to set up a booth at Civil War Days, which was something new since that event has come back. It was a cold rainy day that Saturday, but always involved with the Delaware Crossing Scenic Byway. This year, they did a feature on Iowa PBS for Road Trip Iowa, and they did a series where they highlighted all the byways in Iowa. So they did one for Delaware County, which was great. As mentioned earlier, MBE did the mural, so I got to be a part of that planning, and I hope to continue to be part of the next mural that gets done in Manchester. That was really fun. And then a new kind of revenge program that tourism is part of, I guess, is the ambassadors of Delaware County, which previously was the chain, was a committee off the chamber. It still is, but looking to expand a little more and celebrate and support businesses wider than Manchester and look at Delaware County as a whole. There's a list of a bunch of regular meetings that I attend. And the Iowa Economic Development portion is the last page. That's just a snapshot of visitor spending in Delaware County. It's up seven percent from last year from eighteen point seven million, twenty million this year. That's, I had a question earlier when I presented this to the supervisors of where this information is collected from, so I'm gonna find that out from my contact at the Iowa Economic Development. How they gauge these numbers, I guess. But that, that was good information, and then goals for the next year is to keep increasing website traffic, grow social media engagement, so people's likes, shares, comments on the content, and then I'd like to partner with some sort of a content creator or somebody who provides actual video footage and high-quality photos, because I'm not a photographer or a videographer, but I'd like to partner with somebody who's good at it, showcase more of Delaware County for two thousand and twenty-five, so. That's my year. It was busy. Yeah. Anyone have any questions? Thoughts?
No, thank you very much, Greg. Thanks for bringing this up to speed. Appreciate it. Okay, next, nuisance property review and possible, it's a Jim's been working out some stuff for us. Let's just put it that way.
Yeah, and Tim and I met. Nuisance abatement issues have been coming back and overwhelming all this time. Trying to get to a real policy on how to deal with some of this. One of the things that you don't see is the number of times Tim has sent out in the informal letters, and he gets cleaned up. You know, an awful lot of people get a letter from the city, say there's a problem, and they actually respond and clean it up. So those it's not, those don't ever come to me. Because Tim's, he's taken care of it. By the time they come to me, they've been given lots of time and warnings. One of the problems we've had is up until now, it's been our policy to try to work with people. If they wouldn't clean up, we'll dismiss the case and have them pay the court costs. Well, what's happening is we're dismissing the case, they clean it up, and then we're right back in again two weeks later. So my proposal is, and I'd like to go through so you can see what some of these are, is that we change our policy. By the time it gets to us that we've already expended the time, I want to get a court order for cleanup and a fine each time to try to discourage them from getting to that level. Now, with that said, even everything according like that, we can lose a case here and there too, that right, like they can give me the black robe and gavel, so I don't always get to choose. But I think that is gonna be a way that we can get enforcement to stick. Get a fine imposed. We have to do it again, we increase the fine. We, if you get into their pockets, maybe that will help them remember to keep it clean, because you'll see many of these in this list are repeat offenders that we've had on our list that have cleaned up or not. One of the things I tried to give you in this in the beginning, this is for you to tend to, I gave these notebooks. In the beginning, I have a a number of the different ways you can be and have a nuisance property. We, we can't just say we don't like a property. It has to fall under some definition of what a nuisance is. So I have a number of the different examples. And then I frankly just went through the properties we have here. And to go after these properties, sometimes we will need to get an expert witness. If, if the only thing wrong with the property is it doesn't get painted, like the very first one here, and pretty badly, and lack of paint, I mean, it's in bad shape. We have to show that the properties, the fact that property's in such a condition, it's affecting the property values of adjoining properties. And as much as you would think And as much as you would think you could just say that, I need to have an expert, them say, here's my opinion, like a realtor or somebody who knows property values. So some of this would be a little more extensive. Uh, but we have everything from, almost all of, every one of these here, these ten I've listed, are uh, ones that Tim has sent letters to, he's been out with, many, all but probably two of them have cleaned up and required us to come back. Uh, I guess if we want to take a stance, my suggestion is, is we just be a little more aggressive, even as long as, I don't want to take that aggressive stance and find that the council doesn't want that, because up till now, we haven't. Up till now, we've been trying to, clean it up, we'll make it go away, and we're happy, but doesn't seem to be working with them. So, and, and like I said, Tim does have, I don't know, you can speak to it, Tim, how many do you suppose you have, do, what percentage do clean up for you?
Oh, I'd say probably eighty percent would clean them up.
So by the time they come here, he's tried that, and now usually you've at least got two notices to them before they come to me, don't you?
Tim, could you come up to the podium, so that way we can get you on the mic?
Really talking about repeat offenders.
Repeat offenders, but not everybody, they won't all be after we get going on this, because they'll be the first time we find them, but, they just need to know that by the time we take them to court, they should have listened to the notices beforehand. It's kind of like, the trooper gives me a speeding ticket warning once, if he sees me tomorrow, he isn't going to. Um, he's gonna give me the fine, I got, that I have experience with. Uh, the uh, by the time he's given them the notices, I think we're just at a point, Brad, that's where I recommend we go, because I think we're spinning our wheels with some of these.
The challenge we run into is it's not always clear, and as Jim says, we don't always get to make that decision whether or not it meets that threshold. Uh, and we just can't base it on what we feel is happening, we have to have someone, an expert come in and say, that's what is happening. Oh, because when we sit there and talk about a dilapidated building, decreasing the values of the joint properties, it's a significant, well, what's significant, and can you prove that, can you prove that? Just because the condition of that house needs a coat of paint, knocking ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars of value off the joint properties, each and every one of them.
Right. The other thing is, if we go for a fine each time and they have cleaned it up, it's possible the judge predicts some, has sympathy on them and refuses to impose the fine. I just don't think we should, if the court's gonna do that, they can, but I think the position should be, we let the property owners know if we're going this far. This is what we're asking. And we'll get everything we want, we rarely do, but most of the time we will. And we'll see in each of these examples, I've, I've cited what each of these properties, what constitutes the nuisance and what we would have to show. Sometimes, one of the problems we have, Tim can't get a picture, really see what it is, because we can't go on their property to really see, what that accumulation of debris is, is it, the caspive junk, is metal or appliances, or what is it?
Just not fencing, because like fencing, you can't get.
Um, no, just even some of the properties of its, where the, the.
In the corner.
Most of the house, in the house, in the garage.
So we can get an administrative search warrant in those cases, not that we're gonna go in and, batter doors down, but to go on the properties, we can take pictures legally and get on the premises, walk on the premises and do it.
Just walking around the backyard, or seeing what's behind, maybe offensive, obviously you can see something sticking up, but you can't see what truly is type thing.
Twenty years ago, we used to do that. And then, you know, people realized that we realized we shouldn't. We used to go around back and take off, and you can get angles and you can do stuff, but it really hampers our ability to prove it. Or uh, if there's a vehicle in the back, we can't tell, is it inoperable or not, you need to go look, has it been moved in the last thirty days, is there brass? That's moved under it, things like that, that he can't do because he can't go on the property, so.
Are most of these places given to you by neighbors or other people reporting them, or is it something?
The majority are, some of the many countries, countries like that. And one of the things that we've always tried to do is, we go to enforce it, somebody will say, yeah, their house is just as bad as mine, why are you picking on me? We do go on a complaint-first basis, we can't pick on everybody all at once, but if somebody brings it to our attention, that's gonna rise to a different level. Um, we can't just go out and blanket hit every potential nuisance in town, because we don't have the staff.
Right.
Uh, but I don't know if you want to, if you look at any of these, do you have questions, I mean, some of them come from, and most all of these, have had neighbors complain on this, on the, on these ten. And I think many of the neighbors will recognize this repeat offender. But, I guess my main thing is, if you leave this, Tim and I think this is the way to go. Um, but you're the ones that are gonna get the phone calls when we started enforcing it, so I want to make sure you, that you're comfortable with this.
So this will be put in the form of a motion, or do we have to do it as an ordinance?
I just, I just want your direction from the council, I don't need a motion as much, just what are your thoughts? Was.
I think that, excuse me, I think that um, we are trying very hard to work with them without, and it's obviously not working. So I personally would like to see a fine put into place that could be leveled, will not necessarily going to be leveled against everybody who's, because they have the choice, they can clean it up, or they can get a fine, it's not like we're going to go in and say, everybody that has, a dead car, you know, is going to get fined, because that's not the way it's going to be.
But by the time it comes to me.
It could, yes, but, but my point is, Tim has already talked to them and given them the choice. So I think you're looking at a choice situation where you can get the fine or you can clean up the situation. And so to me, I think that's a reasonable way to look at it, I think in the same way that you don't necessarily give somebody a ticket, when you stop them for speeding, if you feel that by talking to them, they will slow down, you know, that type of thing. It's the same situation, you have it in your back pocket to use, but you don't necessarily use it each and every time. You use it when it becomes necessary, that's how I feel, and so I would like to see that, as an added choice that we have to try to clean up some of these places.
Yeah, part of this is a judgment call.
It is.
And Jim's part of my.
Very much so.
Because if they have a bunch of kids' toys piled up.
Right.
To find a bunch, is it a nuisance, is it junk, is it kids' toys, maybe they have five bicycles, the kids are riding, and they're not, maybe they aren't rideable mission, you know, at what point do they cross that threshold that this is a nuisance, and that's where it takes Tim and, if he has questions, he comes to me with that, at some point we have to figure out, okay, is this really, point where we're gonna start issuing no violations and cleanup?
So. I just think of another tool.
Yeah.
But it's definitely judgment, in the same way that everything else we do is judgment.
But overall, I don't intend to file any, I don't expect to win.
Well, yes.
I mean.
And at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to a judge, correct?
Right, and at the end of the day, the judges are pretty fair, but, depending how sympathetic a person is, it's still small claims kind of court, I mean, the judges have a little way to do what they think justice is.
If judge gets them a couple times in front of them though, too, they're gonna feel the same way we do.
I'm, I'm slightly hesitant on the fact that like, some people just don't have the money to maintain.
I know.
Um, you know, as we look through this binder here, there's one that we've all been getting hunted on lately that clearly have the money to do that, but just chooses not to, so in those situations, that judgment has already been made, so to say.
Yeah.
But um, to me, this is just like that uh, that parenting thing that we just uh, passed for the cop screening, we have another tool. The judgment, if we need it, it's still gotta go to court of law, and the judge is still gotta say, yeah, this guy's wrong.
Yeah.
So I, I support it.
And you have the option of, in the first proceedings, to, to clean their property up, and then we would.
If they clean it up before he sends it to me, I'm, we'll never have a fine.
We'll never have a fine, right.
I feel like there's enough checks and balances though, to where there's not.
Right.
Overstepping and having too much government power in this situation, I think we definitely, there's enough.
It's concerning, if we just started doing this, people would be telling you, hey, I just got my first notice and now they want all of this.
Hmm.
And I can, we won't do any of these without having, usually send two, don't you?
Usually.
Notices before you ever give them to me.
Usually just one notice.
But I've seen two in a couple of these.
Well, that's been ones that they've cleaned it up, to the point where you can kind of consider it clean and then.
And then it goes back.
But sorry, we're gonna have a note, no.
So it gives you another tool as well.
Right, yeah, and I think once we start issuing fines, they might be more interested in listening to his notices, yes.
And respecting.
Yeah.
That there are city ordinances and codes that say that this isn't how we want our city to look.
You're gonna ignore him, this is what will happen.
What do you think, Linda?
I think it sounds like a good plan.
Yeah?
I agree too, I think it's a great plan. And I, and I would keep those notebooks, so if you do get a phone call on any of these, it does give you an idea what our thoughts are on them, because these are, we're gonna start with these ten.
Good place to start.
These would be your, probably your top ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate the work you've done on that, because it really does help to see you. I've driven past some of them, and I agree, you can't always see what the, the situation is, and you don't really understand.
The problem is, we have to prove what's there, and we get a pretty good idea what it is, but.
But, but this is very helpful, so thank you, Jim, for doing that, Tim, thank you.
Actually, Tim and I learned a little bit too, as I shared the laundry list of all the nuisances, we, found all sorts of little parts of the code that we can use this, we can, we've got quite a few in that list.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, next, um, we're gonna, Dog Park Fencing, I believe, uh, Dog Park has been acquiring funds and they are, ready to move forward as some of their.
A couple quotes, um, right now, the Dog Park Committee has about forty-nine thousand dollars raised. Uh, two quotes we have for fencing, um, are, basically the low one is just under twenty-five thousand. And um, she'd like, that's a really good rate, and we will need to put twelve thousand five hundred down to lock in that price. And then most likely, the installation would not happen until next spring. Uh, that's kind of the preferred timeline for us as well as the company, and then that gives us a chance to kind of, get a little roadmap of what else we need to get, how much money we have left, um, and what the, process will be, um, in order of, of, you know, sidewalk fence, signage, et cetera, in order to be able to open up in the spring. So I just want to have permission to put that twelve thousand five, five hundred down and plan on that fence to be going in, um, in springtime.
So they've been raising all this money, and we've been the holder of the money, the city has been, correct?
They have, no, they have an account.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they will reimburse us for that, so we're issuing invoice to them, but the city will be the first person that purchases the fencing.
So, okay.
We'll be the purchaser, and it'll go on our, our property.
Yeah, okay.
Hold up, so the city owns the park, yes.
Okay.
The city's gonna maintain the property.
Yep, yep.
Mow it.
Yep.
Clean the poop up.
Well, we hope that the dog owners do that.
We'll clean up the poop.
Well, we will empty the garbages, yes.
Um, so, not to cut you off, but the owners do not clean up the poo-poo's cleaning up the poop.
Across that ridge.
Well, I think we need to set some rules before we can start putting the fence in.
Such as?
Well, I've had people calling me saying, I love to live at Dog Park, but what are the rules, do you have to be vaccinated, what do the vets say about these, I don't know nothing about it. I never been to Dog Park, I mean, maybe.
So we, we have, we have, we have a pretty good base of rules, um, we're not anywhere near the first, Dog Park, so we've got a, we've got a lot of different communities' rules that we've gone and, and pulled bits and pieces from. There's differences in, in some setups, because some of them are near a place that can be, policed or staffed, I guess, you know, if it's right next door to a rec center or a civic center or something like that, it's a little bit different. Ours is on its own, so we, we can strongly encourage a lot of that, but there's no way for us to police some of those things. And so it's, it's a, it would be a set of recommendations, but there's really no way that we can s, we, we're not gonna have somebody there to stop somebody if their dog isn't vaccinated, but they would be on the hook for anything that would happen.
They would be on the hook.
Yeah.
So, so if a dog kills another dog.
It's the dog owner's.
Dog owner's responsibility, if they bite another human.
Yep, responsibility.
Strict liability for the dog owner.
We're the dog owner.
Yep.
So we're not on the hook, we don't have to carry none, none.
Or we're not a daycare center for the dogs.
Nope. Yeah, it will, it's not when, it, it's, you know, not if, it wouldn't when. Uh, because I've, I've talked to many people over in Dyersville that have had horror stories where they've been uh, uh, wrapped up with a leash and uh, dog getting another dog, and fighting and then biting the person trying to get the dog separated. Um, I know a lot of people won't, I would never take my dog to a dog park just for the disease part of it. Um, you know, that's, think, and, my biggest problem is, is I've talked to many, many people that come in my shop, I just ping them, you know, what do you think of the dog park? And really, there is no, nobody that I, I talk to is in favor of the dog.
Oh, I.
You know, because of the trail, because of the, the amount of trails and parks and, and that we have in this area, um, I, I mean, there's everything, you, you got, you know, Ritz Park, you've got uh, Bailey's Ford, you got, you, you, there's so many parks around here, there's so many trails, so many.
A lot of those are, yeah, a lot of those are not supposed to be off-leash though as well, so this is a spot that is designated for off-leash, dog areas, so they can run free.
Where there, will there be a uh, separation between small dogs and large dogs?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, and then, yeah, I just, I have concerns about this.
I guess you enter, you enter the dog park at your own risk, so if you drive and get sick, well, you took them there.
Correct.
But it would be nice if we could make it safe, we don't have to worry about that, like, to check in, they have to check in somewhere, go sit here somewhere, prove they have vaccination and get a tag, and they can't get into park unless they have this tag, because anybody come, their dogs can be very sick and contaminated, always.
Well, you can have a tag and still be sick as well though.
Exactly, but at least you'd be vaccinated, that's the point.
It, again.
Humans get vaccinated.
Yeah, it's, it's just one of those things where we, we don't have personnel there to do it, so it's pretty hard to police it. Um, and it, it happens, I mean, that we're, again, we're not, this, we wouldn't have any, the only dog park that would be this way, there's plenty of them that operate this way, and, with, there's always gonna be issues when you're dealing with humans and dogs and, and pets, but um, we're not, we're not breaking ground here, this isn't anything that's, um, you know, we're not doing anything different than other communities have done, just a spot for, for dogs to, to get some exercise and for humans and dog owners to socialize and, and eat.
So will we have any set of rules whatsoever?
Sure, of course, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to be.
There have to be a lot of rules.
Yeah, we, like I said, we, we've gone through, we've, we've visited and, and found uh, you know, eight to ten different, different dog parks and communities of what they have, and so we're picking and choosing some that match our location and, and our size and what we have. Uh, again, it's, it, there's no one-size-fits-all, because bigger cities will have different things, smaller cities, depending on the location, where they're staffed at and so on. Um, but yeah, we, we've got, we definitely have them, like I said.
Especially for like a aggressive dog that bites another dog, like a one stripe, you're out.
Two, two stripes, you're like out of the town or.
Well, we have laws on that already for a dog that bites another dog.
Potentially vicious dog, potentially vicious animal, yeah, so that's, again, part of this is being a good pet owner, and understanding what you're doing with your pets, and whether or not they can get along and socialize with other animals. Um, and so i- if you're uncomfortable, you don't put yourself in that situation, yeah.
Yep.
I think there's a lot of people, you know, Brian, saying, no one wants it, there's forty-nine thousand dollars behind it that has come from the community. So I think that there are a lot of people who want this, I personally, I don't have a dog, I'll never use it, but um, you know, if, if people are willing to put forth the money which they have, I mean, those people, on this committee have worked as hard as any group I know to gather this money, I am so proud of that committee because of the work that they have done for the city. Um, and so I personally, um, I know that there could be problems, there could be problems with anything, you know. So I think we're gonna have to assume that people are gonna be good stewards, and if they aren't, then obviously they don't have to go back. I would make a motion that we accept this bid and that we go ahead with the fencing. Um, there's a lot of people out there that do want it, I know some people don't, but some people. Um, there's a lot of people out there that do want it, I know some people don't, but some people do, so, can't keep everybody happy.
What's the city gonna be on the, we're on for, for maintenance?
It's the same as any other city property we own.
Right.
Just like any other park, yeah.
Is there any way we can get figures around to kind of figure out what we're walking into, there's, like, as far as. What it's gonna cost us to maintain the dog park?
We need contracted mowing, is, is the biggest thing.
It's, it's, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a location that we're already mowing now, um, we already, we have a, a dog waste station. Right at the entrance of the, the wastewater plant, so we already hit that direction now, there's a trail that goes back there, so we're already going through that. Making sure everything is, is up to par, so will it add an hour or two here or there? Yeah, it will, but it's, it's not any. It's gonna take an enormous amount of time or effort or, or money or, or.
I talked, I talked about a guy that, uh, uh, used to mow for a bigger, bigger community. And he says you wouldn't believe the amount of time because after you're done mowing, then you're cleaning the equipment up because there's dog poop everywhere on it. And it's very time consuming because of the dog poop, you know.
We have that at the park though too, we have that at Carroll Park and every place else because people do that.
Shram, Shram Park is.
They're already doing it now, so.
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, exactly, school grounds, school grounds.
But this is more confined, you're confined to.
Right.
Yeah, I, when I, you know, when I would think the, the highest maintenance side of things would be is, is to attempt to keep grass growing. So we don't turn it into mud holes, um, where all, where the, the paws and the feet go, which is one of the reasons, you know, try to get a sidewalk in there as well. So we have a little bit of a buffer there, um, but as far as mowing, it's not a whole lot, as far as removing the garbage, it's not a whole lot. We already do that in, you know, every other park and we, we have, uh, we have a dozen dog waste stations throughout the park system and trails. So we're already hitting those regularly as is, so it's just a, it's just another stop on the, on the tour, so to speak. Um, again, the biggest thing for us would be, um, keeping grass, trying to keep it, trying to keep it green in there.
Keeping it water, so it'd be water expensive.
Possibly, um, it's, it's hard because when it's, when it turns into a, uh, you know, a busy park, there's only so many times that you can get in there. And, and, and have maintenance without trying to disrupt people in there, and so it's, um, you know, a little bit here and a little bit there, um. If, if we can keep it growing, great, we can't, then we come up with another option, um, some places we'll put pea gravel down. Where some of that areas are mulch, where, where the high wa- the high wear se- uh, sections are at and places, so. That way it doesn't turn into a muddy mess, but we'll, we'll cross those bridges when we get there, none of it's, none of it's too big of a hurdle that we can't jump.
I think, and the other thing that we have to remember is that this was also brought up as a community thing way back when we did Good to Great. That the community really, really wanted a dog park and they have battled for finding a location. They have multiple times, they have finally found a location, they have done this fundraising. They know that this is going to be a self-sufficient, they're trying to keep that and work with the city to do that, so, um. I, I'm a dog lover, my daughter has brought, they, every place they've been has had a dog park where they're at, they've taken their dogs there. They've never had a bad experience where they've had, so maybe they've been lucky, there's always that opportunity, but it could happen at Tarrel Park, it could happen walking down your drive. I've got people who walk up and down my sidewalk every day, walking their dogs, but this is a way for them to be social, for them to run. Many families, their pets are their babies, that's their children, so it's providing another opportunity for them, so.
It's a social outlet for the, for the owners as well.
Exactly.
You know, and, and keeping the dogs socialized and active, and it's an outdoor activity, keeps people moving, it's right off of the trail, so people will be, will be out there walking. Um, and the benefits far exceed the, the downside of this, um, and it, I think it's, it's good for a healthy, healthy community.
So I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Any other further questions or discussion? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Linda?
No.
Brian?
No.
Can I speak on this?
You bet.
So. The committee raised these funds on their own, with no help from city funds whatsoever. And would like to do something for the park system and the community, and we're saying no, I don't understand.
I'm saying, no, let me go first, please, I'm saying no because I don't have enough information on this dog park, I don't know what. All of this is going to entail, we don't have guidelines that have been submitted to the council to, for us to know how this dog park's gonna be managed, there's just too many unknowns for me at this point. So. This isn't just a one or two year, three year, four year deal here, once this park is here, the city maintains until forever.
What details are missing that are, that we're curious about?
What are the rules and guidelines we're gonna have for the dogs to be there? Who's taking care of the, the neglect of picking up the feces from the dogs? And how we're gonna maintain this kind of stuff, I would just like to see a better plan brought forth, in my opinion. I'm not saying I'm against a dog park, I will never take my dog to the dog park because that's just not my thing, but I'm not voting no because of that, I'm voting no because I just don't have enough information.
Okay, so can we bring this up, can we have somebody come to the meeting or present that stuff at the next meeting? And we can put it back on the agenda for reconsideration, is that open for everybody else?
I would reconsider it with more information. And I'll keep reaching out to people, cause I, Doug, honestly, I just, I just, the, the people I talk to are not in support of, of having a dog park. See, I was just for the.
I am the exact opposite.
Well. So we should tell the people of Manchester, don't bring your dogs here, take them to Edgewood, which just got a dog park. No. Dyersville's got a dog park. No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying, don't bring your dog, there's enough trails and parks and walkway around Manchester, Iowa. To walk without having a dog park, and that's the response I get from the majority of the people I talk to, why have a dog park? When there's enough trails and parks already in this community and surrounding communities, and that's where I'm at getting, I'm not saying. Don't bring your dog to Manchester, Iowa, in no way, shape or form. I, I don't see where the cost of the city maintaining the dog park is any different than. It's just another. Attaining. So are we gonna hire another guy to, uh, you know, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, now, now we're adding yet another. And, and it's gonna be a lot more labor intensive than I, than you think, at, at least that's what I gathered from.
It will, it will add labor, but it will also add a ton of benefit, I mean, we, we didn't say, you know, we don't say no to adding, uh, a, another restroom. Or another basketball court, or a pickleball court, or a skate park, though, those are, those are community amenities that. Our part, of course, it's gonna take a little bit more effort to keep clean, but you, 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 um, you sacrifice that for the greater good of the community. And I think that this is definitely, uh, when you look at the benefits, they outweigh, the upside definitely outweighs the downside. We have parks employees that are already doing this in every park, so it's not gonna add a whole lot to it, it really won't. Um, will it add some? Of course it will, just like everything else, just like the disc golf course does, adds a, adds an amenity to the community, adds a recreational outlet. Um, I, I, I think that you're, um, I think that maybe you're overblowing what you think it'll take, it's, it will take some time, of course. Um, no doubt about it, people, dogs, there's gonna be waste, there's gonna be pickup, but it's not gonna be anything that's gonna be, um, too much for us to handle. Or, or too costly, I don't think there's an, any chance of that happening. And as far as the, the rules go, I mean, I'd like to think that, um. Could have some trust in the committee and myself that we would come up with a set of rules that will be safe for all the dogs, be safe for the dog owners. And again, we can't police it, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of common sense that goes along with it as well.
I get that, and I'm not saying that you guys can't do the job and you can't maintain it, I'm not saying any of that. What I'm saying is that based off the information that's been presented to me. I don't know what everybody else has, but to me, based off of that, I just don't feel like there's enough information. I've had, other than city, people that are, are in this group of people that are raising the money and running the dog park organization. You guys got like, whatever you guys call it.
Committee.
The committee, outside of that committee, I have not had anybody, not one person come to me and say, Joe, I think we should have the dog park, not one. I've had a lot of opposition, I'm not saying that people don't want it, I'm just saying the people that do want it, we need to let me know why they think it's gonna work. This is no different than Grand Avenue for me, when I, when I said no the very first time, it was because all of the information I was getting was not positive information.
We've had multiple fundraisers that have proven that, that, that it is, that it is desired, um, I mean, again, we don't. We've only raised forty-nine thousand dollars, um, because people don't want it.
I understand that, I just. I just feel like there should, there's more information that needs to be shared, and that's, I mean, the way I've voted since I've been in this chair. No matter if it's Grand Ave or the airport or any of that other stuff, the information's gotta be presented to us. While we get in a council packet and you want us to vote on some of that stuff, I'm not attacking you, but sometimes we just need more information. Cause seeing more stuff, like, shoot us the rules of what, and, and, and it's gonna change. Because day one rule is not gonna be what we see six months down the road is working, we have to, we're gonna have to adapt and overcome all these hurdles in life, and I get that, I just.
Do they have, they have a board, don't they, for their group?
We have a committee.
Yeah, they have, but in the committee, but they have like officers or whatever and they've got.
We, we, we.
Not quite that far yet, they're doing more, working mostly on the fundraising.
I think they know the fundraising, but they have worked really hard on getting the rules together and they've, like Doug said, they've gone through twenty different set of rules. They've visited a number of different dog parks to see what rules do they have on there, and there was a lot of discussion on, do we have to have them. Come in and get a tag from the city so they can be out there, well, that's fine, but who's monitoring that? Uh, and so who goes out there and says, hey, you don't have a tag for your dog?
We can't even get people to register their dogs in town when they've got.
So, so those are things that we're going through, but again, we have the dog waste station out there, um, people monitor and police themselves out there. Because you do have people that are passionate about their pets.
Right.
They're watching, seeing what other people are doing, and I get it, there are people, that's the reason we have nuisance complaints today, because we have people that just do not want. Have the same lifestyle or expectation, but it, it is, it takes time, Doug's point, I mean, there have been a lot of people that have raised funds. When we did the, uh, fall event down here, uh, the Riverfront Park, they had twenty-nine vendors set up, uh, had a huge event. It was cold and windy that day, but they still had quite a show, I get it, there's a lot of people that, no, we don't need this, we don't need this. There are segment of populations says we do need it, the skate park was a great example of that too, a lot of people said we didn't need a skate park, we don't need that. We don't want those kids staying out in our park, it has turned out, so it's something beneficial, people like it, um.
And I was private funds too.
Those private.
Private funds as well, just like this.
I remember hearing people, all the kids were begging the city to build that, that skate park.
Yeah, but we had a lot of people who did not want it, we had them fight just like this, and it's been since Good to Great that they've been fighting.
How long has it been fundraising?
About a year and a half.
Year and a half, probably. Yeah, just, even if we could get, I got Tuesdays off, not this Tuesday because of the holiday, but on a Tuesday, I'd be more than willing to come up and meet in your office. With another, one of the dog park committee people and just ask you all some of these questions, get the information. You know, that, that's just where I'm at, I'm not saying that I'm gonna say no a hundred percent till the day I die in this dog park, I would just like more information.
I would like you to invite them to the next council meeting, and they can just present to everybody, so the community and everybody can see what we're gonna be seeing, and then we'll go from there.
And the set of rules too.
Well, again, we don't have the rules set yet, we have, we have.
Do you have a tentative?
We have tons of them that we're picking and choosing, I mean, we're, we're pretty darn close, but again, until, until we actually lay them out. Um, there's, it's not, um, I don't wanna say, it's not overly complicated in terms of the rules, um, you know, a, a lot of it comes down to common sense. You don't, you know, you, you, there's age requirements, there's size requirements for the small dog, the large, the large dog, there's timeframes when the, the park is open. Um, you know, and then a lot of it is, we, we want you to have, y- your dog needs to be up to date on vaccinations, your, your dog, we would highly encourage you. To register your dog through, through the city, um, clean up after your dog, if your dog is aggressive, you don't come, I mean, there, this, it's. They're very general common sense rules, um, but I mean, I can easily show you those, it's not a problem, but just, there's not a, I don't have a set document. Right now, because virtually they're all the same side of if you are having somebody staff it. Or if you're having, you know, a pass card or a, a membership or something like that, and we are not, since ours would be located down there. There's no way for us to, to police it, there's no way for us to register it, if somebody wanted to come on a Saturday, the only way they could do it is if they came in here. So that wouldn't work either, so we don't, we're not charging, you know, there's no fee that's charged to come to it, um, some places will charge. But again, if you don't have anybody there, it's an honor system sort of, sort of charge anyway.
Well, and it can be, you know, I, I ride dirt bikes and side by sides and stuff like that, so when I go over to War Blue, you gotta be. State registered to drive, just like you gotta do driving on the road, because it's a public park, it can be something as simple as that. The only way that they police that up is randomly a DNR officer will show up, which it wouldn't be a DNR situation, but they'll show up, and if you. He just walked up and down all the trucks and trailers and stuff, and if you've got something out your ride and it's not got a tag, here's your fine, congratulations, you win. You know, I, I don't know if the police department wants to go down or how any of this works out, or city employee goes down and says, hey, you know, I enjoy a dog park, you know, make conversation. And say, hey, by the way, can I see that you have documentation, your dog registered in the city? You know, just.
Part of the challenge with that is, do we have visitors come to town, and are they able to use the dog park? Uh, part of the committee, one of the members was the hotel manager out of Cowlstone, and she had people that would come with their pets. And they were looking for a place to let their pet go exercise, and so that was one of the things she was pushing, well, if you have to have registration. The city, well, they're just passing through and they're not gonna stop you, and these are the things we talked about for a couple of different meetings on the rules and regulations, how you set them up.
Yeah.
So they're not finalized, but we're just certainly bringing those in so you see what we're looking over.
And it can be something as simple as, hey, I think the dogs should be registered, well, this is what we, this is what we have decided would probably be an issue. If that was the issue, that the route we were gonna go, okay, now I can see how that works out, you know, just more conversation, I just, like I said, I just feel like I'm out of the loop on this dog park. And from what I'm hearing in my ear, it's. Are we the city going to do a parking lot down there? Are we gonna have to build a parking lot?
Well, there's already gravel, there's already gravel lot right there now.
On, on the south side of, of the lot.
Down on the south.
Yeah, yeah, so if you, if you were to drive in, if you, if you go and look at that area, you can see it right there, yeah.
Yeah, and there have been cars parked down there already, as they're out exercising their animals or using the trail or whatever.
Is that not, we're staying gravel?
Gravel.
Uh, we're working with, we're with City Painting to see if they will bring in, or when they do East Main Street, if they have leftovers from the end of the day. Take it down there, put an inch and a half of asphalt over top of it, where they have to waste it off anyway, if we can work something out. Or Pleasers might be willing to do something along those lines too, so everything the dog park committee's trying to do is do it as economical as possible. And, and try to get donations.
And that would be from the dog park?
Correct.
Okay.
Doug, Doug, you've said in this that, um, you need this down payment, twelve thousand five hundred, how long before you have to pay that?
Question.
Because a lot of those have.
To lock in the price, I think it's a thirty day quote, I can call them, I will, that would be to call them and see.
I just don't wanna lose the.
Yeah, lose the pricing.
This is a six foot, uh, black vinyl wrap fence, commercial grade.
Next part of their thing after they get the fencing done, is there a plan for a shelter too?
Sidewalk, shelter would be the last thing, sidewalk, signage, benches and water cones.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
As far as the benches go, are there any benches that we had from when we updated ours that we still have, that we could use?
I don't know what Doug has down there.
Updated.
Maybe any benches that, we only have, it's typically go to someplace unless someone wants to donate one for the dog park, there's no more of that, but usually they have an idea where they want them.
Yeah, and it's, and it's still something that may come in as a memorial too.
Right, this, when we walked the city shop, I just remember there being benches, I know, those place that, you know, I mean, save a little bit.
Those are going, those will be going back in by the Whitewater Park, they were, they were from where the old gazebo was at, and then we removed them. And so we're putting them down by the entrance to the Whitewater Park that go around.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Doug.
I'm sorry.
Okay, next, um. We have a motion to adopt resolution one twenty-eight approving a grant for Airport Runway Real Rehabilitation with Kirk and Michael and Associates. And you want to speak to this team?
Yep, uh, so we are required by FAA if we want to proceed with this project, um, we have to hire an engineering firm. Kirk and Michael has been working with the city on a number of projects, they submitted their proposal, a third party asked to review that proposal for appropriateness. Paragraph J reviewed that, uh, they were within the guidelines, the FAA, the FAA is willing to accept that as part of, uh, us hiring our engineer. As a qualifying, therefore Kirk and Michael was now qualifying expenditure out of that agreement.
So the grant funds will cover the cost.
What's the cost? What should we pay through the grant?
Yeah, again, it's eligible expenditure under the grant, so if, uh, again, it's either ninety-ten or ninety-five-five. It just depends where we're at funding wise, because we do have a cap. Five, five, it just depends where we're funding wise, because we do have a cap on it. There's six hundred thousand dollars. In, uh, airport program, program funding that we have available. There's their three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, I think, in the bill funds. So again, this is all getting stuff put together and ready to go. As part of this project, it's a asphalt overlay with some patching. Uh, and then the option if the funding is, the, the prices come in right, we'll put in a tile line once, edge of the runway. To help drainage out here, but that's an option. If the funding's too high, or the project cost's coming too high, we'll eliminate that option, keep our cost down.
I'm making motion to adopt resolution one twenty-eight for the Kirk and Michael Associates runway rehabilitation project.
Any other further comments or discussion? Bill, oh, sorry.
We haven't found out if we're getting ninety-five, five or ninety-ten yet.
Um, we are guaranteed six hundred thousand dollars in, uh, AIP funds and three hundred and thirty-nine thousand roughly in the bill funds. There is not a special appropriations for our airport, so we're trying to keep our costs at that million dollars. And then we have, uh, our grant match on that as well. So that's the reason I'm saying. Ninety percent it would be what we're looking at. We, we had a cap of eighty-four thousand, I think it was, eighty-three, nine hundred. That's what we're shooting for. So we're not, our exposures are not ironed out.
Any other questions? Bill?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Anyway, next, I have, um. This is the other, okay, I need a motion to adopt resolution one twenty-nine, and this will accept the work covering the twenty-twenty-four East Main Street Improvement Project, top grade excavating. Uh, started the project in April, completed August fourteenth. Probably cost of one million five hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. The city received an initial bid of one million three hundred forty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Final project ended coming in at one million two hundred sixty thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents. City's engineer on the project has reviewed the work and is recommending acceptance of the improvement project. Do you have anything else to add to that?
I answered one question.
I should have gone to Ryan, not you. Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? If not, I'll take a motion. In a second.
This is basically everything. We're done.
Yes, we're, we're in the process of closing out the project. We need to accept the project. So that we can get the project audit done by the DOT. This allows us to proceed with our assessment process as well.
Well, the yes, the assessment process will start at the next meeting. So we'll have the final numbers for the council's review and we'll start proceedings that are. Required as part of that. It's about three hundred thousand less.
I'm making motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Good job, okay. I'll let you guys fight over it. Okay. Bill?
Yes.
Uh, Lynn, or Joe?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Well, I gotta still cue myself from, uh.
I think so, yeah.
It's just.
Now, this is supposed to be, but it's, yeah, if you want to say.
I'm sorry, I was looking up something to answer your question later. You do.
Next, I motion to adopt resolution one thirty. And that will approve the easements between the City of Manchester and four property owners in connection with the light and cables that anyone talked to us about tonight. I believe you see those around in front of you. It's Frank, uh, Franklin Sack, LLC, Franklin Street Brewery, Mike Corkery, Wes Schulte, for two of the properties. I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Marion?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of your involved for doing it.
Yeah. Okay, next, uh, I'm gonna let you go first.
Updates, uh. You know, primary one, Tim and Chad and I met with FEMA and Homeland Security a couple of weeks ago about cost benefit analysis on the. Uh, Butler Street booster station and looking at the water system. So we're in the process there to evaluate. Potential for FEMA funding, um, to address. Our proposal to move that system and add booster pumps to the current low pressure system, but, uh. A lot of that will depend on whether, what type of funding and how much funding can be made. So it's a, it's a bit of a process there. It's not gonna happen overnight and or if we're. Probably looking at other funds too to help support that possibly through SRA, but, uh, that's definitely underway. Um, still working on CIP numbers on some street projects, including Anderson Street, downtown work. Um, those items, um. That news, ready to go out?
Yeah, I just.
Aaron shared an email with me this afternoon that DOT, uh, has fun, or has fund available for West Mary Street Bridge.
Whoa!
We have to respond by the December, so later than December twenty-third, we have to know whether we're going to move forward with that. Or if we wanna just wait and delay it, uh, we can reject him and stay on the list. It just gets pushed out.
I was gonna say, I'm far out, you get pushed.
We have three years. If we accept it, we do have three years to get this done.
Right.
Uh, there are a number of questions Ryan and I need to go through with the DOT on this first before we get there, but. Uh, West Mary Street Bridge is in need of some maintenance.
And we've waited a long time for this.
So we, we get on the list for five years.
So as far as the bridge, did we ever end up deciding, so now we got funding?
No, 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 no. Well, they've, we've made it.
Right, we made the cut.
Yeah.
But as far as that, have we decided this, are we gonna have a lit, uh, lit up bridge and all that other stuff?
This is just about the meat, the.
Uh, we haven't got the lighting figured out yet. So that, that's. That's an accelerating thing that we'll worry about as we get through. First, we gotta do the design. Get the estimate across and verify that we can. Uh, cover the cost and all of that.
This would be reherding the bridge or?
It says, uh, replacement.
Replacement.
Renovation or repair or replacement. Now, the request, most recent request was from twenty-one, and it was about one point two million dollars. It was based on, um. Repair, maintenance of superstructure, I believe redoing with it. So in this, the structure was built nineteen eighty, so it's about forty-four years old. It does need some attention, but it's overall pretty sound shape. So you do need to sit down, look at that, and then take a look at our budget estimates. Uh, I mean, point two million is not a small number, but. Projects are not inexpensive.
And bridges are designed to last as long as people live there, so.
They're, uh, you know. In the timeframe of bridges, it's, it is truly at the point of some rehab, re, redevelopment. With that process is, is taken, you know, we'd be looking at hopefully another forty years or so, forty, fifty years.
It's how a lot of floods go through.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's probably one of the biggest challenges when you do any project with bridges, it's just, you know, active, something like that happens. And there is, there is Main Street, there's this one, and there's Highway twenty. So there is. Ability, it just. If one of those is out, it, it does make that travel around quite a bit longer.
Yeah.
So, um, I know that was very exciting to see today.
Yes, that's good.
Good Monday.
We're on the other side too, you know, if you shut that bridge down and fix it or. It goes bye-bye and flood. I mean, what's gonna be worse?
Well, probably challenges. Bridge is down, West Mary Street Bridge is down because we're repairing it. And then we have the flood, which takes out Main Street Bridge because. That's underwater, you can't use it. So the only D four routes we have, it's been Highway twenty around.
Right.
And that's a long detour.
Right, but I'm saying it'd be better to. Fix it and take that risk of that flood coming at that time and have no issue compared to not having a bridge because of a flood.
Yeah, it, the bridge will withstand the flooding. It's just, yeah, like I said, it's a challenge.
Will that affect any of the street projects that we have projected at this time?
We're gonna have to look at. We're gonna have to look at numbers because the street project itself might impact access to that bridge with self-reinforcement.
As we're looking at the downtown and redoing the streets in the downtown visit. Uh, in the downtown segment, it's not just a matter of regaining the streets, it's also the curb guard and sidewalks. Um, and the railways are fixed points and you still have your drainage areas, places that the curb line has to fall into. Um, and those projects are changing a lot. So, uh, that's Ryan to bring me down into walk phases. And again, there, there's a lot of unknowns in our downtown.
Easy.
It is good though that we have three years.
Yes.
So that's give us some time now.
This for year twenty-nine.
Six or twenty-nine, basically.
And so it'll take probably a year for us to get the design work done. Um, and then like then you have the beds and everything else depending on what. What it entails.
It's a fun thing about city government, just when you think you got a plan, something like this comes and messes it all up. So, so we will have this as an agenda, I think, December ninth meeting. Uh, hopefully have some preliminary numbers and further discussion by account as well.
December ninth, early thirty, pretty about out. Soon Ryan.
Gets your information.
Probably the ninth, so you don't wanna have me on. I don't wanna go down to the wire on it.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Cause, yeah, the twenty-seventh is Friday after Christmas, so that's not, yeah.
Yep.
Um, and just a few notes, I, I know we just approved East Main, but it did come in under. Estimate under bid. Uh, we, we did take advantage of the budget project did. We had some contingencies built that bid. I think we found further ease such as some. Additional removals and we did during project, uh, you know, Perry was on site reviewing and. Were able to do a little less excavation, use a little less subway space on the field condition, but we ran into. So. Having that staff on site, having people look at that. And just, you know, the ability to make some changes during construction or even do some overestimating when we did. Allows us then to make sure we either avoid change orders during the construction or take advantage of a decrease in costs. Overall, the project went very sound. We're wrapping up record drives. Uh, Austin went through all the pre-audit stuff and just like everybody else who goes through it the first time. It's a lot more intensive than anybody thinks. So we should be seeing pretty sound. We'll sign that, uh. Acceptance to the DOT so they will start their. Process to do that audit and be able to go through the final assessments. So it's there, so good project completed. Any questions?
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you. Jason?
Sorry. All right, so Ryan, we're starting the processes. We're starting to get into winter now and everything. Record drives pulled together for both the Grand Avenue and Commerce Court. Now, those are complete. Uh, we're working on getting fieldwork completed, uh, for the Grand Avenue Trail, that design over there. Um, and then we are also, um. There is, it's not necessarily an engineering update, I am, but a council update. Um, there is a, a site plan submitted and an agenda for review of the A one project down on Commerce Court that's gonna be happening, uh, Wednesday of this week. Cause they're looking to start moving forward relatively rapidly out there. So I'm sending the street project down ready for him is a, is a good thing.
Awesome.
Yeah, great.
Did I say anything else, Tim, that you can think of? That's what I always call me out there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Jim?
Okay, well, I was just corresponding right now with our bond, our attorney on the, trying to get that bond for the league. And, uh. Just eight, at six twenty-one. Sent me a reply, uh, saying he wants to meet in the morning with me to see if we can get this done. So we've been getting calls and I. It's encouraging. So now you know everything I was, I was going online to see if he filed anything yet and he hadn't, so then I. But we'll see tomorrow what's, I should have something to report.
Okay.
So it's about time.
Yeah.
I'll finish responding. If you must know what time I can take his call tomorrow. So, so just doing now. That's all I have.
All right, that's good. Jim?
Uh, do you have your calendars with you? Uh, just a couple of reminders, the London Pet Runcheon is tomorrow.
Morning.
Um, out of Pin Oak. Um, I do have on my calendar or question for you, do we want to have a committee of only meeting Monday night? Or is, with everything coming up, that we have got going on, do we want to forego that?
Do we need? Do, do you have one?
I haven't, I haven't. Okay, forego it. Forego that. Uh, reminder then, December sixth is our employee appreciation. Um, banquet. If you are able to make it, please let Aaron and I know so we can get account for our. Gators.
I think I. I, I, you got mine, okay. I thought I gave it.
Uh, what time is that?
Uh, starts at six P M.
It's at the gathering.
At the gathering place.
Likely.
A music trivia going on that night, isn't it?
It's, uh. Again, um, new to you going out there, are they still gonna be? But I mean, they're not, that's not gonna be a gathering place after that, then?
No. Uh, goal setting session is December, Monday, December sixteenth. Council will meet at five o'clock. That will be at, uh, Seabert Hall. I sent out email to you, your city accounts this afternoon with a link to a survey where you complete, um. It shouldn't take that long. You should be able to do it within fifteen, twenty minutes. Uh, there are, there's a couple where you just select. Points and then there are some red, red activity in there as well. Uh, if you're not able to finish it, just leave it. You can come back and finish later, but don't submit it until you're finished with them. Um, then we are going to have a meeting on December twenty-third. We will do that meeting. And then just to give you a heads up, uh, I will be moving my daughter to Houston on December twenty-seventh, so I will be out until January sixth. After Christmas.
They're moving already, I'm like.
Yep.
We don't have, do we have a meeting?
The first Monday in January, we won't, and we'll get into our budget work sessions. Aaron will have the budget schedule out.
No, we won't have, we won't have a meeting in that period anyway.
No.
No.
No. We'll be waiting on evaluations, so we should have those first part of January. Then we can only get some numbers together for you. So that third. Monday in January will be a pretty big meeting.
And the only other thing is we're getting stuff put together for our initial meeting with the union for negotiations on our contract. So I'll probably get that started, then I'll be back to the council, uh, some talking points where council feels we should be at.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Aaron?
Uh, Tim and I attended a budget work session put on by the League of Cities, uh, last week. Um. It's gonna be an interesting year, so, uh. You know, it looks like the legislature is gonna be looking at property taxes again and ways to, um, to reduce those, so, uh. Just stay tuned.
And local office and sales taxes, something else there.
I'm sure that'll be gone.
Well, the challenge here is that was voted on and letting, voting by the people at your, in the community. I think that's, that's a challenge, but if they take over as sales tax. There's still that constitutional amendment where they are required to put that towards clean water. Or water quality, so. But we'll see what happens.
Anything else? Uh-uh, okay. Brian?
No.
Linda, nothing? Linda, or excuse me, Marion?
Well, I'm gonna stop Linda for just a second. Talk about the chili cook-off because I think that it's important that we get a solid here as a.
Okay, the chili cook-off is December fifth, and it's going to be here at the city council chambers.
During the window walk.
During the window walk. And make sure you bring your chili and let's heat it up. And, um. Between four o'clock and five fifteen, so we get there all ready to go. Come in and taste. This can be sample and vote for your favorite. And there will be prizes. Top prize is fifty bucks.
Chamber bucks.
Chamber bucks. And the second and third will be twenty-five dollars. So please bring your chili in and have a good time, so.
And I need to pick it up by seven.
Oh, yeah, don't forget to pick up the ground glass or you'll lose it.
Judging ends at seven.
Yes, so please bring your chili in.
Thank you. I, well, I just wanted to get it out.
Yeah, you're welcome, yeah. Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. And Marion?
Okay, so I'll bring up the other thing that we're doing, um. Next Sunday.
It's the first.
First, okay, December first. Uh, we are doing a free movie at the movie theater. Um, this is for our seasons of kindness. And what we are doing is showing Moana two. I'm not sure I said that right. Oh, did I do it? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway, entrance to it will be to bring something for the food pantry. So, um, families, please come, enjoy the evening with us. Uh, bring something to the food pantry and enjoy the moment.
They need soup, no tomato or jello, but otherwise monetary or whatever, so they can purchase things.
And the movie will begin at five.
Five.
Five o'clock.
And concessions are available.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Joe? Bill?
Bye.
Okay, I'm gonna add the other part is also part of the season of kindness. Okay, I'm gonna add, the other part is also part of the season of kindness. Um, we're inviting people, the, uh, Manchester Vitality Group has put the Christmas tree downstairs, uh, downtown. We're gonna do the lighting at the very beginning of the program this year, but we're encouraging people to be able to bring their favorite snowflake. It can be handmade or purchased or whatever, or whatever they wanna do, and, uh, put a snowflake on the Christmas tree. It can be, you want to, like, memorialize maybe a family member or somebody special that you've lost. Or just as a nice thing to represent your family, and decorate the tree throughout the night. So we're looking for snowflakes, so everybody, you know, for that night. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. No, we're just, uh, looking forward to getting to the budget and getting to. Upcoming year, yeah, know what, know where we're at, so it'll be good to know. Um, with that, I wanna wish everybody a blessed Thanksgiving, safe travels to everybody, and we will see you next time. I'll take a motion from Bill, a second from Joe, to adjourn, and we are adjourned.